Chair Salvador, the meeting recording is just begun.
I think I'm not. Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. We're ready to go, whenever you want.
Okay, so it's two, it's 2:01 PM on March 4th, 2021, and we're going to start a regular board meeting, so I'd like to do a roll call. I understand that trustee Mario will be, will not be participating with us today. And I think, I don't see anybody there, but I think trustee Stillman is running a little bit late, I believe. Just want to make sure, put that on the record. Let's see, trustee Pierce. Saw your name here, trustee Pierce, are you here?
Here.
Okay, trustee Wilson, I think I saw you too.
I'm here.
Okay, trustee Boat. All right, trustee Good.
I am here.
Okay, trustee Sullivan.
He's here.
Trustee Sullivan here.
Thank you, still on mute.
May we unmute trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, operator error on my end.
And then trustee Kane.
I'm here.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right. So may we have a volunteer for the pledge of allegiance? May I get a volunteer for the pledge of allegiance?
I'm happy to do it, chair.
Thank you, sir.
Yes ma'am, you want to do one or both?
What?
One, yes ma'am, thank you, please rise, cross your heart, join me in pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the agenda is the certification of the posting, Dr. Head has, we did the proper meeting posted?
Yeah, it was posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. I don't think we have any items for a closed session today. So we're going to move towards a public comment. Helen, do we have anybody signed up for public comment that would like to talk?
We do, I believe. We've kind of lost Helen there, but John Bergdorf is. We're having technical problems with Helen right now, but John Bergdorf, if he's out there, Link, can you connect us with John?
Working on it right now, sir.
Okay. Link, Helen can't get off the mute, so.
I just, I just actually fixed her, and I'm trying to find John Bergdorf right now.
Okay.
Link, I just got an email from John Bergdorf that he's having trouble getting into the board meeting, the WebEx symbol is just twirling.
Do you want us to? Chair, so we want to move on, and then we'll come back when he comes on.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
I'll work with him shortly here, make contact with him.
Just let it available, then we'll, we'll work him into the agenda, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, so let's, in the meantime, let's move forward for, into the introduction, special gets and recognitions, do we have anyone today?
Yes, so I would like to introduce Carlicia Wright, and I asked her to. You approved her higher at the last meeting, but I wanted you to see who she is, and I asked to just give you a brief overview about her background and just generally the approach that we're taking, and she's already started, I think you all are going to like her, she's already started meeting with a lot of people and getting a lot of input about some of the, some of the challenges we might face, and really her, she's going to be gathering a lot of information, then come back, and then we'll come back to the board and give you some updates over what we're thinking about, so, Carlicia, if you could.
Good afternoon, thank you trustees for having me today, and thank you Dr. Head for inviting me to introduce myself. As I have said, I'm in my second week on serving as Lone Star College's chief diversity officer, I'm really excited to be here. I've been serving the Houston community for 10 years, originally just from a background perspective. I came to Houston from the city of New York recruited by Mayor Denise Parker and served as her director of affirmative action and contract compliance. And title changed and evolved, and I became the chief diversity officer and the director of the Office of Business Opportunity. And so I'm very well versed in this, in this community, driving equity has really been, what's driven me professionally for the past 20 years, so I've worked in everything from affordable housing, workforce development, economic opportunity, and workforce diversity, and so really excited to be joining Lone Star College to provide a system-wide approach to addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. I, you know, I, like I said, I've been on for two weeks, and as Dr. Head said, I've been really rolling up my sleeves, meeting with a variety of stakeholders. I'll meet with everyone from faculty, staff, I just actually right before this met with the faculty senate president, but meeting with faculty, staff, administration, as well as students, and hope to actually facilitate a climate assessment for the entire Lone Star College systems to drive the overall diversity strategy. But again, thank you all for approving this opportunity and bestowing this responsibility, and I look forward to working with you all.
Great. We have.
Carlicia, so much, we look forward to having you and, and work with you, thank you so much.
But I'm sure John Bergdorf is back with us now, if we want to move in that direction.
Yeah, so let's, let's go with public comment, please.
I'm moving him in here shortly. John, you are now connected in the meeting, you can unmute yourself and present to the board.
Great, thank you very much, my apologies for the technical difficulties there. The miracles of modern 21st century life. I am Dr. John Bergduff, president of AFT Lone Star College, and I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to visit with you today. Critics of unions will sometimes say that unions exist to shield employee, bad employees from getting fired. Actually, nothing is farther from the truth. As union leaders, the AFT executive board and I firmly believe that serving our students must be the core commitment of every employee at Lone Star College, and that the college has every right to hold all employees accountable for performing their job duties professionally and compassionately, whether they are faculty, staff, or administration. What we also believe, however, is that all employees have the right to be adequately prepared to be successful in their jobs, to have a clear understanding of what is expected of them, to have the opportunity to improve with assistance from their supervisors, and to have well-defined due processes in place to assure that their rights as workers are respected, and that decisions about their future are not made in a capricious or vindictive manner. In this regard, I'm very pleased to say that we support and endorse a new training on progressive discipline that was recently inaugurated by the Office of Human Resources with the support and guidance of the Office of the General Counsel and the Office of Governance, Accountability, and Compliance. This training is mandatory for all LSC employees with management responsibility, and as a department chair, that includes me. Much of the material in the training involves policies, forms, and procedures that already exist, but that needed to be drawn together in one place to be accessible to managers. It also includes a flow chart to explain not only how the pieces fit together, but what the purpose of the process is supposed to be. The new training from the union's view builds on the valid assumption that the vast majority of workers want to be successful in their jobs and will be open to correction if presented in a positive way, and if they are given a fair opportunity to do better. The flow chart indicates the importance of informal coaching as a first step, recognizing that this will be sufficient for solving many situations. It emphasizes the use of performance improvement, or PIPs, when coaching is not enough. PIPs outline in writing both what is expected of the employee and what the supervisor will do to assist the employee to achieve greater success. Except in certain severe cases, such as illegal activities or situations that put students or other employees at risk, the flow chart clearly shows that coaching and PIPs must be given a chance to succeed before formal written warnings are issued. Written warnings, when given to employees who are trying to do their best, can paralyze them with fear rather than inspiring them to do better. But they can be necessary when more supportive means have failed to result in necessary changes. Even then, the end goal of a written warning should be to try to salvage an employee rather than just being a box to check on the way to termination. The forms and processes outlined in the current training make that distinction very clear. The training also makes it clear that steps beyond the warning level that could lead to termination must give employees due process rights and must be overseen by layers of administration to guarantee fairness. Again, most of this is not new, but it is now in a format that employees and their managers can effectively use. The trick will be to make sure that all managers across the Lone Star system actually follow these procedures. Many of the problems that we in the union assist our members with involve situations where these processes are ignored. Getting complete buy-in at all levels will be a challenge, however, getting the process in order and requiring training is clearly the right first step to get started. From the union side, I am presenting this flow chart and all the accompanying forms in a training I am doing for all the members of our, of our executive board this Saturday. The more that union leaders understand the process ourselves, the better we will be able to assist our members, both in understanding their rights and also their responsibilities. If all of us can get the progressive discipline process working smoothly with buy-in from all sides, we will have a more effective institution and happier employees at all levels. Our thanks to HR, OGC, OGAC, the administration and the board for organizing and endorsing this process. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for working me into the schedule.
Thank you, John, thank you so much for your patience, and sorry for the technical difficulties.
No worries.
Do we have anyone else? For public comment?
We do not.
So let us move to the approval of the minutes for the February 4th workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Sorry.
I think there were some, yes?
We did have, sorry, we did have a special acknowledgement, by the way, if you're not aware of this, Gerald Napolos, I was going to say Gerald Napolos had a baby, his wife had a baby this week, so they had a baby, 10 pounds, I can't see, 10 pounds and 4 ounces. Donna and the baby are doing fine, I think, I'm not worried about Gerald, but.
Such a cutie. Oh, I love that name.
So, yeah.
Yes. Congratulations on that. Such good news.
Okay, sorry for your interruption.
No, no, that's okay. Let's, the approval of the minutes for the February 4th workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. I understand that there were some edits to the meetings, I just want to make sure that we correct those before we approve them. So, just give me a second so I can read the corrections real quick. So on page three of the minutes, it reads trustee Wilson asked about the money that was designated for low-income areas, and how money is being distributed to those students. To be corrected, to read, trustee Wilson asks about the 1.9 million that was designated for low-income areas, and how money is being distributed to those students, is that correct, ma'am?
That's correct.
Okay, is there any other corrections that we need to make before we approve the minutes? Okay, so may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February 4th, 2020 workshop and regular meeting?
So moved.
Okay, in a second. Okay, so it's been moved and properly second, that we approve the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passed. Thank you, ma'am. So now, let us move to, what's next, the special reports and announcements. Dr. Head, do we have any specific?
There'll be a couple of updates here, so we talked about our health and safety protocols, and this is really in response to the governor's announcement yesterday. We, I sent you all an email. We are allowed to continue what we've been doing, and that's our, that was our decision with your concurrence yesterday, so just for everybody else, still have our health and safety protocols, which, that's masks, social distancing, we have checked in, we do contact tracing, we do hand washing. We're not changing what we're doing, and I, I just want to point out, we've had the response from our employees has been overwhelmingly positive, by the way. So, you know, my, my position on this is, and I think everybody else is, we, we have a responsibility for 85,000 students and 7,500 employees, and we, to our knowledge, we've had no linked transmissions, in other words, somebody hasn't caught anything here, now granted, they've been off, but the way students, been on campus, but the way students hang around each other, and even employees, we want to be really careful with that, and until we reach, and I don't know when that's going to be, for vaccines, we reach a stage where we feel comfortable with that, we told the faculty and everybody else that we, we're anticipating continuing what we've been doing until the end of the year, and then we'll see. And all that, and I, my standard response on this, it just depends on where we think we are with the vaccine and how everybody feels, and I think we'll know later this summer and early fall exactly where we are, but we're, we're moving into the fall, and we're putting our schedule together based on our 50% online, 25% hybrid, and then 25% face-to-face, and the colleges have some, that, that's not a firm figure, if, we do have some people that have been vaccinated and may want to, they may want to teach in person, and that's fine, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about that, but we're continuing with our policies as allowed by the governor's directive, so.
I guess, if I may, I guess it's safe to say that, you know, regardless of how you feel with the announcement of the governor, I mean, we always have to practice with caution, right, and I think that's what we are continuing to do, so I just want to make sure that whoever hears us during the meeting, that we will continue with what we have done in the past during the pandemic, just to make sure that families, students, our staff and employees are, are safe.
We'll make sure we stay in touch with the board over that, I, I mean, I, we all here, I can tell you, and I know you do too, I know the board does, we understand the significance of all this, and the spread of the vaccine and what that may do, we've all known people that, that unfortunately have caught the vaccine, and a number of them have passed, so. Okay, so let me talk a little bit about the winter storm, Jennifer is going to talk about the damage we sustained to our facility, she'll talk about that later in the program. And, but let me talk to you about what I think is probably more important, we, we provided funds to employees and our students, and so we gave out $93,000 to 375 full-time employees, 375, they had a maximum of 250. We, thanks to an anonymous donor through the foundation, we are helping 3,800 students with $800,000. Now, 100,000 of that is auxiliary money that we have, and then the other, the other money, 700,000 of that is through, donor through the foundation, and that was a maximum of 250. And then, over the weekend, the donor wanted to get more money to allow money for adjuncts and part-time employees, so there's $100,000 in that account, and we'll send no doubt either later today or tomorrow morning about the timing on that, but we just got that straight, so that's 375 full-time employees, 3,800 students, and I don't know how many of the adjuncts and part-time, but if we do it the way we've been doing it, it'll be around 400, so. And I don't, I don't know who the anonymous donor is, but remember, this is the same donor that provided over a million dollars during the Kingwood flooding issues that we had, so, so thanks to the foundation, that's, that's, that's helpful to say the least, help everybody get through this issue, so. Quickly over the enrollment update, so keep in mind that, and Jennifer will talk a little bit about this in the budget piece. So from the budget standpoint, we have an enrollment, they're all tied together. On the enrollments, we were, we budgeted for a minus 10% decline, and you know, we were down 4% in the fall, and this spring, we're up over a half percent, which doesn't sound like much, but that's better than anybody else I can see, I talked to Odessa this week, they were up about 1, but everybody else is down. Across the state, I was on a meeting this, this week with the commissioner. The state ranges from minus 8 to minus 15%, minus 8 to minus 15, keep in mind, we were up in headcount. The credit hours were down 3%, and that's, that's really how we do our funding internally, that's where our money is coming from locally, that's tuition and fees. The, most of the colleges around us were down 10% to 20%. So, we're taking a close look at this. We, and, so that's tied to the budget, and that's my next item, but so on the budget, our plans are right now to have a meeting with you, with the board in April or May, and the reason we're putting it in that time period is, so we have, and this is really for some of the new board members, which I know some of this you know, but we have three buckets of money, where we, we have our revenues coming from. The largest is our assessed value, which is about 41 or 42% right now, and we're not going to have our assessed value until our appraised value until sometime in April, late April, we think. So that's number one, number two, we get about 32 or so percent, something like that, of maybe 32 to 35% from tuition and fees. So, one of the items today, we are waiving the student activity fee, we'll cover that out of other funds. We're actually reducing the amount of money we have coming in, and we've done that to help students out, and we couldn't justify, we'll cover that out of other money, but we weren't going to charge the students that. So we don't know that, and then we don't know what the state is doing right now, we're hoping to be held even, that they'll give us the same amount of money, or I, I don't think they're going to give us any more, but as I've mentioned to some of you, and I've, I've talked about it in some of the meetings, the association as a whole was interested in a redistribution of the money, and I think they backed off of that, and we have been talking to anybody and everybody in the state about not changing that formula right now, so we're not going to have, all this is going to come together in late April, early May, sometime we might know in mid-April, and then we'll come back to the board, it's just too early to say exactly what we can do and can't do. We are in excellent shape, and Jennifer will point that out, we also have eliminated 85, not, we didn't terminate anybody, we didn't lay anybody off, we just did not fill 85 positions that we've had, and that's a little over $7 million, and again, she'll talk more about that. Couple of, some really good news, I think, on the accreditation, keep in mind that as we move to the bachelor's degrees, we have to be re-accredited, and when we create new programs, the, so that, we, we call it the Southern Association, it's SAC for short, comes in and reviews us, so two things happen. And then there's a nursing accreditation board, so the nursing accreditation board came in, in early February and gave us glowing remarks, and I sent the board a note, but for everybody else. And then, two weeks ago, actually during the middle of the freeze, we were, we were dealing with the other, with the association itself over approval for our bachelor's degrees, they were extremely complimentary, so our bachelor's degrees will be approved formally later this summer, I think in June, but we're in really good shape on the accreditation, I, I expected this to be, but you never can tell sometimes when they come in, and the last thing I have is, for two things, one, to follow up on a couple of questions that trustee Pierce mentioned, and trustee Wilson has mentioned before on the student assistant and wellness, we're going to come back to the board soon with some proposals over how to, how to help students with mental health. Gerald Napolos has been following up on that, and we have some preliminary bids, and we think with the stimulus money that we'll be providing additional services to students, so we've got a meeting next week to talk about exactly how that, how that looks. And finally, if I could go to the stimulus funds, and Helen, can you make that a little larger? No?
That would be Link, and I don't know if you can.
A little larger?
No, we can't make it any larger, sir.
Okay. Well, either you can pinch it with your fingers or just stare at it, but I did want to point out to you kind of where we are with stimulus money, so we, so a couple of things have happened. And, and trustee Wilson, this really goes back to kind of some of the questions, or the question that you asked, so the initial CARES Act, we received about $30 million. Wrapped within the CARES Act, though, as part of the CARES Act, was money for MSI's, minority-serving institutions, and so we gave out about half of that money, and the, half of that money is going to students, half of it is covering our cost for the expenditures we had going out for COVID. So if you'll take a, take a close look at that, you can see, and that, so the, the first two charts are really the same stimulus, that's the first CARES Act, it just happened to be, they were separated.
Can I ask the question real quick?
Sure.
I'm sorry, this is trustee Ayers-Wilson, okay, because last meeting when Jennifer was speaking, she said that we received, Lone Star received 30.7 million, and in addition to 1.9, which is not, what you just mentioned is not together, that's something totally separate. So are you telling me that you all combined the 30.7 plus the 1.9, which is something that needs to be corrected on record, because that's not how it was explained? So, just want to get that clarification before my next question.
I think that's all the same, Jennifer, is it all the same amount of money as a total, 30? It came in as the same, and the award, it came in as CARES, and it came in as MSI, so.
Right, but the way, the way Jennifer mentioned it last week, last meeting was listed, mentioned different than what you're mentioning it now, and so we just want to make sure we err on the side of caution and how we're wording things when it comes to funding.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it is, so if I could say, it is different, so you see on this chart, it shows for the CARES Act, 14.4 million, so we got CARES Act, 14.4 million per students, another CARES Act, 14.4 million for institutional, and the one point. And the one point eight, um, MSI funds. So the, we got those three separate things from the first CARES Act.
Right, okay. So the last meeting, my question, and I appreciate this chart and, and everything, but this is not giving me, giving me what I need. This is not what I was like. Um, detailing what I asked for.
Okay, well, I guess we.
Yeah, I see what I'm saying. So when I mentioned, um, I needed to see a breakdown of how the one point nine was just for being a minority-serving institute. I only wanted the one point nine. This is just telling me, I don't know, because y'all are saying now that it's kind of combined. Well, how will we differentiate the one point nine and how was, how will we know, um, out of the minority students, um, at each campus, how many of these, the actual accurate numbers? You, you understand what I'm saying? Like, how was this broken down? How was, how was it decided that each campus gets this? Because I'm in District Three and I know my, all of my, all of my schools are minority schools, but my numbers aren't as high as I fear. And I know y'all are going to say it's probably because of enrollment, but that's not always true.
We broke it down by, I'll send you a report. I said, you probably haven't seen it yet. I sent you a brief email, but there was one point nine and so half of that goes to the institution for institutional cost to cover COVID. Those were the criteria. The other criteria was you had to show a need, which we did through Pell, that's, uh, Pell. So that's the reason you see some disparities in the numbers. I understand what you're asking for, though. We have it broken down.
Okay, and, and how, how, how will we know how much was, um, given back to the institution? Because that's not listed on here. So to me, we want to make sure that as a, as a board member, I know I'm new, but I'm, I, I look at numbers and that's what I do. And so when something doesn't sound right to me, um, or look right to me and I'm digging and looking and looking, I need to know. Because at the end of the day, as an elected member of this body by the people, the taxpayers, um, we're responsible for this money. And I don't want to be held accountable or not, or be misinformed or misunderstand, for lack of better words, um, what, where the money is going. And I want to make sure that my district, um, I know we're all one Lone Star, but my district is at a really disav, is a really high disadvantage. And I'm working, I'm here, I'm elected here to make sure we can put my, my schools up to where the rest of the schools up as far as enrollment, you know, funding, all of that. I just want to, you know, get us to where we need to be. So that is the reasoning for my questioning because I, I look at numbers. And when something doesn't seem right, and I think when you given out a report, you need to have everything in there so you don't have to worry about anybody questioning what's going on.
Yeah, we'll talk to, um, we'll get back in touch with you to see exactly what you want, but just so you'll know.
Not just for me, that needs to be for every board member. Every board member should be questioned.
Well.
Know what I mean? When it comes to the money.
Yeah. The way the, uh, CARES Act came down, uh, it was pretty restrictive on how we could award the money. So we awarded the money based on Pell. Those Pels break down by college. But we'll, we'll get another comprehensive report. I mean, really whatever information you want, we have it broken down and we can give that to you. So, uh, we give it to everybody to make sure they know what's going on. So.
Yeah. Doctor, I just make sure to send, send that comprehension, comprehension report to all of us. I mean, I know that we've always been very transparent with how we issue our funding to our students. So, um, if you could just send us that, that would, that would be.
I think, I think part of the problem, uh, not problem, but, um, I think trustee Wilson, before you came on the board, we were sending out some reports that had it broken down by college and by ethnicity and and, uh, we'll, we'll make sure you get everything that you need and everybody, whatever the board wants, we, we, we have that. So.
And can we do that from here on out? Because we just got the additional CARES money for this, this year and we want to make sure, um, like trustee Stoma was speaking of last meeting, that we get a report of every, every dollar that's being spent because ultimately we're responsible for it and we have to answer for it. So I would appreciate that, even if we can get it on a monthly basis. Um, I want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence by my, by my constituents and, and that's what I'm here for.
Yeah, I agree. That's not a problem. Okay. Glad to do that. So that, that concludes my, uh, my report, trustee.
Thank you, sir. Um, do we have any board members that would like to talk about any events that they participated in or any announcements that would like to make public?
This is trustee Ayers Wilson. Um, I can, um, say that I know in my area, I was, um, helping with like water distribution and stuff like that, um, for, for my area and making sure information was passed out. Um, one, I, I know that, um, vice chancellor Quentin Wright was doing the, he's still continuing to do the, the food and, and stuff like that at the Greenspoint area. My question is, are we going to move that food distribution to the Victory Campus as well, but that community?
I don't know. I'd have to talk with him. Well, I'll talk with president, uh, Wright. Let me see what his plans are. Let's handle it at a local basis. So I don't know. I'll, I'll do that. Then I'll send a note back to all the board members. We've done just, just so the board knows, a number of our colleagues have participated in vaccinations and food drives and handing out water. And so we'll give you a comprehensive list until that you know.
Okay. And also when y'all are doing the, I don't know if y'all still doing vaccinations or how it's going, but can, can we get noticed? So I can let my community leaders know because they, they, they don't know unless I tell them and I don't know unless, unless you all notify us. You see what I'm saying? At least I can send them to where they need to go, you know, for the ones who want it. That, that, I would appreciate that.
We can usually that, either the city or the county or somebody is asking us to use a filter. So we, uh, so we'll make sure that everybody has, knows what's going on there. Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, please. Uh, Chair Saldivar, this is trustee Good. I have a comment. Thank you so much. Um, through my work at Lone Star Legal Aid, we noticed a trend that came to light just in the last few days. And that is an exceedingly high number of people who suffer damages in the winter storms applying for FEMA assistance and being denied because of a selection they're making when they apply online. To people whose pipes burst, it makes sense to click that it was flood or flooding. That is not what FEMA is looking for. They're looking for snow and ice event. So we need to do everything we can to get the word out to our employees, our students and our communities. If you've been damaged in the storms and you were denied FEMA, appeal, appeal, appeal. And if you haven't yet applied, be sure and choose snow and ice event. And the best way to make sure that happens is to apply by phone, not online, because by phone, you're having an interactive conversation.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Good. That's really good information there.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. Let's move to.
Always muted, uh, Chair, uh, Mike Sullivan here. Could I jump in with a, a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, want to bring to everyone's attention some good news. And let me emphasize that, good news, positive things going on at, at, uh, Lone Star. And that's it. Houston Baptist University, uh, has received a national science foundation grant for interdisciplinary collaboration. I bring this up because I'll read from the press release, HBO, you, excuse me, HBU will also partner with Houston ISD and Lone Star College System to maximize the number of students entering the program and the retention of teachers in Houston. HBU will also be partnering with the noise-funded team from Texas A&amp;M as part of the funding requirements. Uh, what I compliment what Lone Star does that trustees often don't see, uh, and that's the extraordinary cooperation and partnerships in the education community throughout our region that have been, that benefit students, uh, from all socioeconomic, uh, levels. And that's what it's all about, is about the students, not about us. So with that, I'll move to my second comment. Uh, Dr. Head, I'll just tell you that as a, you know, maybe not new trustee, but a pretty new trustee still. Um, I've been satisfied with, with the reporting out of the, uh, system office and, uh, would just encourage you to keep up the good work in that. Uh, the reports and the information coming from the administration do meet my needs. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Saldivar.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, let us move to the consideration of the consent agenda. Give me a second to pull it up real quick. All right. So we have some items that we would like to consider separately. And want to make sure I get these items right. Um, so we are considering separately item number four. Item number five. Uh, item number ten. Item number eleven. Number fourteen. And item number fifteen. Do we have any other items that trustees you would like to consider separately? All right, just to make sure it's four, five, four, five, ten, eleven, fourteen and fifteen will be considered separately. So aside from that, um, can I have a motion and a second um, on the rest of the items, which is one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen.
Second by Sullivan.
Probably moved in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. All right, let's go to item four. So we're going to have a motion and a second to consider item four separately. And a second? Sorry, who was that?
Good. Second by good.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Item four has been, uh, properly moved in second. Do we have any questions?
Um, Chair, I just wanted to point out to the board, we, we asked for that and item four and item five to be considered separately. I, I want to point out to the board that on number four, um, we are required to bet, the cost of the bachelor's degree is the same as it is for the associate's degree. I just want to point that out. That you may be seeing these come in all the time separately like that. But by law, we, we can only charge the same for, uh, what we normally would as a community college, the undergraduate degree and then the, or the first two years and then the second two years, which is really a great bargain for, the reason I'm pointing this out, this is a terrific bargain for the citizens of our area. So. But that's number.
What, what's, if I may ask, what's the tuition for that?
Uh, Jennifer, is it seventy, roughly seventy-five dollars an hour right now?
Um, no, in, in total, including all these, it, all of our credit, um, whether it's bachelor's degree or otherwise, it's ninety dollars a credit hour.
Thank you, total. Coming the fees also, yeah.
Uh, yes, which is just the student activity fee, which, um, right, for the current semester, we have waived, so it's really being charged eighty-eight dollars uh, at the moment for that. And so that is, that's what the board passed last March. With the simplified tuition schedule, we eliminated almost all of our fees and rolled it all into tuition.
So that's great. Way, roughly way less than what would you, you know, a student would pay for in a four-year institution.
It's about twenty percent of what you would normally be paying.
That's really good. Thank you. Any other questions, board members?
All right, um, all those in favor of item four? Please vote with the usual eye. Hi. Any opposed? Item four passed. All right, let's move over to item five. Can I have a motion in a second to consider item five separately, please?
Motion Sullivan.
Second, good.
Vote in second. Or comments?
Just to point out that, I want to remind everybody again that while we're waiving this fee, we are covering this through other funds. So, and, um, and the amount of num, the amount of money that we put into that account depends on what the enrollment. So I know there were some questions that somehow if we didn't charge this fee, student activities wouldn't occur, but that's, that is not accurate. We will cover the costs just like we normally do. Uh, right now, the way those costs are being covered are stimulus. So by reducing the student activity fee, we're reducing the cost, the direct cost to the students. So just, just making that clear that, uh, the money will be there. This is just a different account.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions on item five? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor of item five?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? All right. Item five has been. Sorry?
We're not supposed to do that.
If I can.
What don't say so?
Okay, so. Sorry about that. Item ten, can I have a motion and a second to consider item ten separately?
Motion good.
And second?
Sullivan.
All right. Item ten has been properly, uh, motion and moves, probably first, sorry, first and second. Um, any comments?
Yeah. Uh, Chair Saldivar, I just want to make sure that the board knew that this is, um, a grant through Harris County. We've had this grant for, I don't know, um, maybe fifteen years. So it's for economic development. So we have a partnership with Harris County and they, they put in money every year and then we match that money, but I'd have some questions about how we're using the money, but, um, this is a really good bargain for us. So we serve as kind of the facilitator and an organizer for economic development on the north side of, of our, of our service area. So we do things like, uh, we do GS, GIS mapping software. We purchase economic development reports for area chambers and community groups that want to use it. But company wanted to move in and needed some information or a school district or a governmental entity wanted something, we produce that for them. We have, uh, so we run, uh, economic and demographic and labor market data in the area for anybody that wants it. We publish brochures online and, uh, uh, in print, brochures and data. And if, uh, if somebody wanted to, and we had this up before with some of the, uh, economic development agencies that are trying to recruit companies, we produce that information for them. Some really good information. We also have an advisory council, eleven chambers and commerce and economic development organizations. And then we work on special assignments assigned by the, uh, county judge, Judge Sedago's office. So. So we have two sat, two full-time employees that are funded by the college and we, um, use that. We match that money so that we can produce all this to the community. We also compete in a couple of conferences for area economic development groups. So it is a good use to me. It's a good partnership with the county and a really good use of taxpayer money, I think.
That concludes. That's, um, in favor of that is, um, it's just a test of the, you know, the partnerships that we do with our community and, you know, with, um, Harris County, with our county. So very, very good item there. Um, all those, any further questions on item number ten? Right. Hearing none. All those in favor of item ten?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, item ten has been moved. Item eleven, can I have a motion in a second to consider item eleven separately?
Motion Sullivan. Second Sullivan.
Okay, um, so item, uh, item eleven has been properly motioned in second. Any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mike Sullivan, I wanted to compliment Dr. Head and his team for, uh, renewing the lease here and the extension with. renewing the lease here and the extension with responsive head. But I did want to ask if he could give us an update or a status of the contract with University of Houston downtown at the University Park campus.
Yeah, so the timing on this is pretty good. I just signed the extension on the contract where they signed it, and then it just came to me this week on Tuesday. They signed an extension of the lease, and so they are leasing from us a little over 40,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, which is a large facility. That's not quite as large as one of our centers, but that's a lot of space. And they have 2,500 students involved over there, so we're and we've been talking with them more as we come out of COVID to expand their programming over there, so, but it just, I just signed it this week, so Tuesday.
Good. So even with COVID, they, they want to maintain their physical presence.
Yes, yes, a really good sign, so.
Good. Thank you, thank you, trustee Saldivar.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of item 11, vote with the usual eye. Any opposed? All right, item passed. Uh, next is item 14, going to have a motion in a second to consider item 14 separately.
Go ahead, Ms. Good. Sullivan, second.
All right, item 14 has is properly moved in second. Let's see.
So Yeah, Jennifer, I'd ask Jennifer to explain exactly what the, what bond counsel does for us, so, Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. When we still have for the bonds, the voters approved in 2014, the total was 485 million. We issued two series of that so far. The first one was 150 million, and then in 2017, we issued another 150 million, so there is still 185 million left to be issued in bonds on that voter approved bond referendum back in 2014. And we're looking at issuing more of those bonds here shortly. So when we do that and we sell those bonds to investors in the market, we do need bond counsel and disclosure counsel for that to help us make sure that all of the paperwork is correct and in order, make sure that we are providing all of the necessary information to investors. There's an official statement that we have to put out with the bonds, and all of that that goes along with doing that is what bond and disclosure counsel does. And so depending on how these bonds get issued, what this, this item does is it gives us that capacity to utilize this bonded disclosure counsel for this next issuance, possibly other issuances after that, over whatever we may need to do for the next five years, because I think along with the issuance, we're looking at refinancing opportunities, which is refinancing prior bonds for savings. So as those needs come up, that is what the bond and disclosure counsel helps us with.
Thank you. In other, in other words, they keep us in our lane with regard to the law.
Yes, yes.
All right, any other comments or questions, trustees? Thank you, Jennifer, so much for the explanation. Thank you. So all those in favor of item 14?
Hi.
Perfect. Any opposed?
Abstained, trustee Pierce abstained.
So we have trustee Pierce abstained, and I heard someone else.
Sullivan opposed.
See Wilson abstaining as well.
So trustee Wilson and Pierce abstaining and trustee Sullivan opposed, so make sure that we let the record show that. All right, I don't know if I, I mean, did all those in favor of item 14?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so item 14 passed. And then item 15, so can I have a motion in a second to consider item 15 separately?
Good moves.
Second Sullivan.
All right, so item 15 has been properly moved in second. And this is something that I had asked Jennifer to kind of, or Dr. Head to sort of educate us on how this service works, because I saw HCC on it, so I had some questions on it.
Yes, I, this is really more about a procurement method than HCC. At the end of the day, this will not be really an arrangement with HCC, but with JP Morgan Chase Bank. Essentially, we are backing existing agreement with JP Morgan Chase. It's similar to purchasing cooperatives, so because HCC has already completed a competitive procurement and awarded a contract to JP Morgan Chase, we can now have an agreement with JP Morgan Chase at the same rates and terms that has already been competitively negotiated. So that's what this is for.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments or questions on this particular item? All right, all those in favor of item 15, vote by the usual eye.
Hi.
Any opposed? Item 15 pass, passes. All right. And I think the next to the financial report, if I'm not mistaken. Are we ready for financial report?
Yes, if we could move to those slides for the financial report, please. We go one more. So the first slide I actually have is an update on our winter storm damage. These are our current estimates. A lot of this, we still have not gotten official contracts, so these are still our best guesses at the moment. System-wide, we're a large system, so it just sort of adds up quickly when you have a little bit of damage at each location. So we do have about a million in winter storm damage across the entire system. You can see that the largest amount was at Montgomery. There were some broken pipes and then flooding as a result in their administration building and the commons building. The next most significant damage was actually in our private tenant spaces over at University Park Building 9. And then from there, there's some damage at Kingwood to the pilot plant, and then across the system, there's broken irrigation lines and, of course, damage to landscaping, broken faucets. So that is the damage that we have compiled so far. We have been meeting with the adjuster, the insurance adjuster last week, and this week, it looks like for the type of coverage that we have here, these would be classified as other all perils, which means that we have a $25,000 deductible. So provided that the adjuster approves all of the damages as due to the winter storm damage, then the majority of this damage should be covered by insurance.
Jennifer, I might interrupt you real quick. So this is, all this estimated damage will be covered by insurance, but not by FEMA, or we don't, FEMA's not going to be a source for that?
We always go to our own insurance first. Even the case of Harvey, what we are submitting to FEMA is what was over and above what insurance covered. So we do always go to insurance first. So in this case, with it covering the majority of it, I am not expecting or planning us making any application to FEMA.
Jennifer, can I speak to that briefly? FEMA is not intended to be the payer of first resort. They are the payer of last resort. So if you have insurance, you're expected to use your insurance. FEMA only steps in if the damages far exceed that, if you have no insurance, if you're underinsured. In the situation of Hurricane Harvey, those of you who were on the board will recall, our coverage limit was 10 million. We exceeded that on day one. So our insurance carrier paid out policy limits, and the rest FEMA covered. We have the reverse situation this time.
Thank you, trustee Good.
You're welcome.
Is any other thoughts or questions on the winter storm damage before next, I'll proceed to the regular monthly financial report? Okay, if we go to the next slide, please. So revenues here, I want to show, last month, right, I had reported that the percent collection for that point in the year was low compared to where we were in prior years, but we did not have any forecasted variances for the total year in our revenues, so when we figured out why the percentage was low, it was due to property taxes. I mentioned a lot of the timeline for property tax payments getting delayed, really due to COVID. So now this month, the percent collect is now really back in a reasonable range for where we should be at this point in time. You know, about 75% of our revenues collected. So we have 281 million of actual revenues collected. And you can see we jump quite a large percentage here through our financials as of the end of January, because so much of the property taxes are collected in December and January. So whereas in prior years, there was a larger amount collected in December and January, this year a larger portion of that got collected in January. But now this percentage compared to prior years has leveled out. If we could go to the next slide, please, on expenditures. So currently, as of the end of January, we are at 138 million of actual expenditures, or 37% of the budget. This is still, still below prior year's percentages. And this is where I wanted to mention, and Dr. Head referenced it earlier, about all of the steps we have taken since COVID started to operate very cautiously with our expenditures. We had had a spending freeze and a hiring freeze, and now three times, roughly quarterly, last June, last September, and then here just in February, we did go through all vacancies and go through and categorize system-wide all those vacancies as either critical, needing to be filled, or as to put on hold, which results in vacancy savings, or to eliminate. So between these three instances, we have eliminated 86 positions, but we have also have kept on hold about half of our vacancies, roughly speaking. So those are positions that it is felt that at some point in time we are going to need to fill them, but we can do without them for now, for some temporary period of time. So between those three things, we really have been operating very cautiously on our expenditures. This budget year alone, so far vacancy savings are almost 2.7 million as of the end of December. So for the first four months of the year, we've been able to get, like I said, two point, about 2.7 million worth of vacancy savings, which would come from the combination of holding positions vacant and the elimination of positions. So as COVID continues, right, we are continuing this strategy of trying to just be very cautious with our expenditures and allow that to build up our cash reserve. That way, into next budget year, we can make sure we are working towards getting our total revenues and total expenditures in alignment with, as Dr. Head mentioned, still some uncertainty as to what our revenues for next year will look at depending on property tax revenues and depending on enrollments and state appropriations as the third top revenue source for us. So that's an update on this year's expenditures so far, and then just a little bit too of the thoughts heading into next budget year. I'm going to the next slide. Our forecasted variances at this moment are unchanged from last month. So right now, this is really still only including the positive variance from fall enrollment, right? In this year's budget, we had budgeted for a 10% decline, and in fall, that decline was around 4%. This is in credit hours. So that is what is included in this forecasted variance. The plan is that for next month's report, we will update this with the spring enrollment, which right now is looking at like it's down 3.2%. But again, this is in comparison to what we had budgeted for with a 10% decline. But I wanted to wait one more month, because then maybe we can also get, there's a significant second eight-week term that we still need to get the enrollment numbers in for that. So I hope to be able to show that updated forecast next month. If we go to the next slide, please. Same here, this is no change from last month. This is also reflecting the expenditure reduction in the student activity fee area, but again, also as Dr. Head mentioned earlier, we are covering this with the eligible stimulus funds that can cover lost revenues. So for those waivers that the board has approved, we can cover that with the stimulus funds. If you go to the next slide, please. As I mentioned last month, I am no longer reporting on the Harvey spend any longer, as that is fully closed out with us having a total of 52 million expenditures. But of course, we are still continuing to work on the FEMA reimbursements for FEMA. And here, we did receive this past month from FEMA $67,942. So we are continuing to work through all of these reimbursements. If we could go to the next slide, please. And this just shows the various stages that those are in. So that concludes my monthly report. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Very good report. Just, I want to
Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Could I, since this posted agenda item, like to comment on it? I know it was a report, but I'd like to take this opportunity just to congratulate the administration and the accounting team, everybody that's worked so hard to put us in this stronger financial position. I mean, the numbers on enrollment, the percentage decline numbers that Dr. Head gave us at the beginning of this board meeting, that all of our peers are experiencing, we're outshining, we're the outlier, we continue to be. But we don't take advantage of that. This administration has exercised extreme financial discipline. They've been focused, they've been very conservative in their projections. When higher institutions were required to take a 10% decline, community colleges across the state were exempted. However, this administration decided to go ahead and budget in a 10% decline for forecasting, and that has turned out very well for us. So while we are certainly entitled and able to, to ask tough questions about specific line item budget numbers that come before the board, I think we also need to be as quick to recognize the successes that this administration as a whole has achieved. So with that, Dr. Head, thank you. Ms. Mott, thank you, and your team as well, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Just want to echo that, really proud of all of you and your team for making sure that we are in really good financial shape. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before we move for our, I'm sorry, any other comments or questions on this matter? All right, so before we move to our second item in the agenda, I just kind of want to revisit back to item number 14 on the agenda. We didn't have the proper record or vote on it. I don't know what would be the right term, so because of that, I would like to revisit this particular line item, number 14, during our next board meeting. But I make sure
Agenda item.
Agenda item number 14.
Yep.
So let's, let's revisit that in our next meeting. Make sure, let's make sure and the record, you know, shows that as well, if we can. All right.
I'm not looking at my notes right now. I just, you know, I let my agenda go. What, what actually? What actually is item fourteen? Is that the one with the, um, bond issue? That's the one you're talking about?
Item fourteen, yes.
Why are we revisiting this again after we voted? Just a point of clarification, why are we revisiting item fourteen and we've already voted on it?
We didn't have the proper, uh, vote on the matter and so we have to.
I mean, what, what do you mean we didn't have the proper vote? What is the proper vote? I just want clarification. What is the proper vote?
Sure. So we're not, we didn't have the proper vote. We only had two trustees. I think, was it two or three, two trustees, like two, three trustee that voted for it? So we want to kind of set this aside, so we have the opportunity.
If only two or three voted yea, then it failed. Is that what I'm getting? I'm just asking for clarification, because we did vote. Why don't you do a roll call?
And so my, my notes indicated that there were three who did not vote in favor and five voted in favor. Was that, is that?
Okay, so it did pass.
But, but I don't know, but I, my notes may differ from the chairs, so I, I'd like to get some clarification.
All right, so let us go to item number fourteen again. And let us vote on that number. If we're teachers, make sure that we have it, we are all clear on it and we have it written down correctly.
Trustee Wilson, are we doing a roll call per, um, trustee? So we can have, um, better clarification. It is every trustee, um. Okay. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Something that trustee Pierce said, um, leads me to wonder if we have a good understanding of what this agenda item is. It's my understanding that this agenda item is about selecting counsel to assist us in bond disclosures and other bond issuance paperwork. It has nothing to do with floating another bond to the voters or anything like that. Is that correct?
That's correct. We can't move forward on any additional construction projects unless we have bond counsel. So, uh, without approval of the bond counsel, it in effect will kill our construction projects.
And that's construction projects funded with bonds that were already approved by the voters.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion, Madam Chair?
So let's, yes, so let's get a motion. So I had a motion for, uh, trustee Sullivan. Can I get second?
Second, second, good.
Okay. All those in favor of item fourteen?
Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
So let's see who's here. Trustee Sullivan.
I vote yes, thank you.
Trustee, good.
Yes.
Trustee Pierce. Trustee Wilson. Trustee, uh, Kane, I believe.
Okay, we'll take it out. That's why I took it out. This is our chief.
And then, uh, myself, uh, approve.
I apologize, I did not hear trustee Kane's vote.
Trustee Kane?
Trustee Kane voted aye.
And I voted aye. So four, two item passes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Make sure that the, um, agenda reflects that, please, this misunderstanding. Thank you, everybody, for your patience on that. All right, uh, do we have any future agenda items, board members? So, any questions or any concerns?
Can I say one thing before we leave? I, I do want to thank the board, publicly want to thank the board. We're in good shape because of the decisions, um, that you've helped us make and that you've, um, been on our board. People are asking me how, how come we're in such good shape and it's because of the decisions we're making. We can't make the decisions unless you agree with us and we have these discussions about the direction that we want to go. So, um, I don't think you're not appreciated because you are, um, we're kind of the envy of the others, but it's because we're all working together to, uh, get us out of all this. So, and we, we're going to get out of it in good shape. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Um, before, I do want to mention something, a couple of things. One is I want to, um, say thank you publicly, publicly, um, to our donor who donated, um, you know, funds for our thirty-eight hundred students for the winter storm. And also donated funds, uh, I believe it was the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Again, going towards our staff and administration. So, um, thank you so much to you. It's, you know, we're, we're going to put this and use it, um, to good use. So thank you very much for that. Um, and also appreciate what the college system is doing to help our, you know, our staff, our professors, our teachers, and our students. So thank you so much for that. Um, we acknowledge the great work and the hard work that you guys are doing. Um, despite the pandemic and despite the winter storm. Thank you so much for being patient with us and obviously the work that you guys do. And I appreciate you, uh, my colleagues and team members for being patient with me during this time. Thank you so much. Um, I want to make sure that, you know, our next meetings, we go appropriately and we do, and we do fine. So do, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Sullivan.
Second, even though it's not needed.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. So it's, uh, three eighteen. Uh, we officially adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Bye.